Good evening, welcome to the nineteenth meeting of the year. Today is November eighteenth, twenty twenty four. Alyssa, can you please read the publication?
In compliance with chapter two thirty one of public law nineteen seventy five, notice of this meeting to be held at the criminal justice building sixty one Main Street, South River, has been published in the owner's tribute on January fifth, twenty twenty four, posted on the municipal building bulletin board, the borough website, and front door to criminal justice building at sixty one Main Street, South River.
Oh.
Mayor Gindy.
Here.
Councilwoman Valas.
Here.
Councilman Seola.
Here.
Councilman DeSantis.
Here.
Councilman DeZimian.
Here.
Councilman Gertenski.
Yeah.
That's a person. Denzel's not here.
Please stand for the signature.
I am the representative of the flag of the United States of America and through the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please stand for the moment of silence. You may be seated. So we have one award. I am reading on the certificate to the players. Councilman DeSantis is going to help me out. That's Coach Matt. On behalf of the Borough of South River, New Jersey, we extend our sincere congratulations to the South River Knights Pop Warner NU football team for their exemplary achievements, accumulated and triumphed as D three Central Jersey champions on November tenth, twenty twenty four. This series of victories has not only showcased the team's dedication, teamwork, and competitive spirit, but has also brought great pride and recognition to our community. We extend our gratitude to the coaches, the parents, whose guidance and support have been instrumental in nurturing to the talents of sportmanship of these young athletes. The mayor and the Borough of South River, Borough Council, and the citizens of South River stand united in celebrating the accomplishments of these young stars who exemplify their very best of our community's values, brilliance, and excellency. We're gonna name off each and every one of you, one by one. You're gonna come up. I don't know how we're gonna do this. You're gonna receive a certificate and a ring.
Tameer Brewer.
Armani Big.
Joseph Firestone.
Parker Gretsch. Cameron Guys Wilson. DJ Haney. James Hernandez. James Ja Junior. Ibrahim James. Hunter Lackey. Marlon Lackey. Michael Lewis. Alexander McCutcheon. Jackson McDaniel. John Morel. Anthony Pomelo. Cameron Raffin. Scott Singer. Aiden Spielzinger. Lilner Maddow. And then our coaches, head coach Eric McDaniel. Todd Singer. Andre Camello. Dave Haney. Jimmy Wilson.
And this one's for Matt DeSantis, coach.
So I get to sit up here as Councilman DeSantis and just wanna say how proud we are that these boys and girls represent our town. But as Coach Matt, on this side, the hard work, dedication, preparation, showing up, doing their job, adjusting, and then winning, those are the life lessons we instill every day when we talk to them. It's not just about football. They're gonna win in life. There's not always wins and losses, but when you're a champion, it's etched in history. And so this poster's being made for you. Should never want you to hang up on your wall. I'm having it made for you. Maybe a couple of weeks for everybody. I'll get everybody and get them there, so. I just need your help with one more thing. I think you guys will have to do it. Wake the room up a little bit. Let me hear you say woo!
Woo!
Let me say ah!
Ah!
Let me say check this out!
Check this out!
I'll be on these sub with round three. One, two, three! Good job. Yeah, we can't talk. So I'll wake them up. Wake them up. Very good, Matt.
We're gonna go into a ten hour session. First reading, there's four items on for today. Andrew, I'm going to touch on you, Andrew.
Sure, twenty twenty four forty six. That's the ordinance for the consolidated land use board. It abolishes the zoning board and planning board and creates a consolidated land use board.
Uh, second one, it's on fire community building manager. Our requirements.
Yeah, basically what it is, clarify the job of the building manager he reports to and what regulations they adhere to.
Andrew, for the third one, which is the appraisement, please, please.
Uh, sure, twenty twenty four forty eight. That just amends our chapter two eighty eight A and title special events to provide for uh parades if there are closures of streets or sidewalks and maybe increased distances for people.
By private hands.
Yes.
And the last one's gonna be on a third redevelopment of the year, which is going to be. Alyssa, what's on?
Uh, twenty twenty nine street. Yes.
Anyone touch on that?
Uh, this is just for the redevelopment plan, the plan amendment that Todd, your planner, came up with. There's a plan amendment. This is on for just first reading. A second reading will be at the next.
Okay. As a for a second reading, there will be two of them. One is on recreation fees, which is gonna be touching on different, changing of fees on recreation. And then the second one's gonna be on stop signs, which is going to be for cat alley. So with that said, Alyssa, can you please read ordinance twenty twenty four forty four?
Ordinance twenty twenty four forty four, in ordinance of the Borough of South River, County Middlesex, State of New Jersey, amending the Borough Code of the Borough of South River. So as to amend chapter one fifty five entitled fees.
Make motion away to full reading.
Motion by Councilman Seola, second by Councilwoman Valas.
All in favor?
Aye.
Like to open this to the public. Give me ten minutes. Figure name and address. Anyone else have anything to say about it? First, first call. Second?
Motion to close public?
Second.
Motion by Councilman Seola, second by Councilman DeZimian.
All in favor?
Aye.
Council, do you have anything to say? Do I have a motion? Motion who? Motion by Councilman Krasinski?
Second.
Second by Councilman DeSantis.
Councilwoman Valas?
Yes.
Councilman Seola?
Yes.
Councilman DeSantis?
Yes.
Councilman DeZimian?
Yes.
Councilman Gertenski?
Yes.
Order twenty twenty four forty five?
Ordinance twenty twenty four forty five, in ordinance of the Borough of South River, County Middlesex, State of New Jersey, amending the Borough Code of the Borough of South River. So as to amend chapter one ninety three entitled vehicles and traffic.
Motion away to full reading. Second.
Motion by Councilman Seola, second by Councilman DeZimian.
All in favor?
Aye.
Like to open this to the public. Tell me, please, figure name and your address.
Yes, sir.
Come on. Okay.
Good evening, my name is JD Asmup. I live at six Fourth Street in South River. While safety is a priority for us all, I must strongly oppose all these, these always stop signs due to their apparent noncompliance with well-established MUTCD traffic engineering standards and the troubling precedent set by recent stop signs installation in our town. The manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices, MUTCD, is a federal program designed to standardize traffic control devices across the United States. The twenty twenty three revision of the MUTCD section two B dot zero six states in bold, quote, standard. Yield or stop signs shall not be used for speed control. Support, appropriate traffic calming, or other speed control measures are available to control vehicle speeds such that those do not have the potential to diminish the effectiveness of traffic control devices when used for their specific purpose, end quote. I reviewed the past twenty twenty four and twenty twenty nine revisions of the MUTCD code. That passage also is in both of those revisions, but is listed only as a guidance. The twenty twenty three revision has promoted the standard, or the section to a standard, and changed to a bold font. This change is indicative of the importance and compliance of the two B O six standard. The MUTCD code, section two B twelve, always stop control requires that traffic engineering study be conducted to justify an always stop interception. This study evaluates things like crash data, the traffic volume, to ensure that these control devices are required to improve safety and traffic quality. Without such a study, the installation of stop signs cannot be justified. I reviewed the agenda from October twenty eighth and a letter of recommendation from Sergeant Flores. It did not indicate that a study had been performed, nor cited a reason for adding the new stop signs. It's clear to me, though, that these stop signs are being used for speed control. Using stop signs as a method of speed control is not only a violation of the MUTCD, but also has other negative consequences. The practice erodes public confidence in government decisions, damaging trust in broader regulatory systems. When stop signs are used for speed control, drivers often ignore them by rolling through or failing to stop entirely. Frustration caused by unnecessary stops can lead to aggressive driving behaviors, such as burnouts, ratchet acceleration after stopping. These intersections can lead to traffic divergence as drivers seek to, seek alternate routes. They can cause problems in other areas. Public comments on social media indicate these problems are common all across South River. Instead of relying on stop signs for speed control, more effective measures should be taken, such as installation of speed tables, radar speed feedback signs, and targeted law enforcement. The focus should be on solutions that address the underlying causes of speeding, rather than relying on measures that punish, confuse, and frustrate all drivers. Several stop signs installed in recent years appear to have been placed for speed control and should be reviewed to determine whether they meet the required warrants for an always stop sign. Those would be David Street, Morningside, Cam and Twiddles, Leonardine and Shunshun, Wolfax and Darrell, Elborne and Carmen, Cleveland and Snapper, Polfax and Ferris, and Darrell and Ferris Street. Those all started within twenty twenty one to twenty twenty three. These, I'm sure you know, these have all gone in over the last couple of years. I urge the council to reject the proposed installations and review the MUTCD compliance of all recent four-way stop installations. Moving forward without proper justification undermines public trust, safety, and compliance with the MUTCD code. Thanks for your, your time and consideration.
Anyone else from the public? First call. Second call.
Close public.
Second. Motion by Councilman Seola, second by Councilman Krasinski.
All in favor?
Aye.
Council discussion. Do I have a motion? Motion to approve?
Second.
Uh, motion by Councilman Krasinski, second by Councilman Seola.
Councilwoman Valas?
Yes.
Councilman Seola?
Yes.
Councilman DeSantis?
I'm standing.
Councilman DeZimian?
Yes.
Councilman Gertenski?
Yes.
Go ahead and do first reading, twenty twenty four forty six.
Ordinance twenty twenty four forty six, in ordinance of the Borough of South River, County Middlesex, State of New Jersey, amending the Borough Code of the Borough of South River, so as to amend chapter fifty entitled land use procedures.
Mayor, move that the council pass ordinance twenty twenty four dash forty six on its first reading by title only. Can the clerk be authorized to publish the same as required by law for the second reading in public hearing to be held at seven P M on December the ninth, twenty twenty four, by video conference via Zoom in the council chambers in the criminal justice building sixty one Main Street, South River, New Jersey.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Seola, second by Councilwoman Valas.
Councilwoman Valas?
Yeah.
Councilman Seola?
Yes.
Councilman DeSantis?
Yes.
Councilman DeZimian?
Yes.
Councilman Gertenski?
Yes.
Lesson twenty twenty four forty seven?
Ordinance twenty twenty four forty seven, ordinance of the Borough of South River, County Middlesex, State of New Jersey, amending the Borough Code of the Borough of South River, so as to amend chapter seventy two entitled Public Safety Department Act.
Mayor, move that the council pass ordinance twenty twenty four dash forty seven on its first reading by title only, and the clerk be authorized to publish the same as required by law with a second reading in public hearing to be held at seven P M on December the ninth, twenty twenty four, by video conference via Zoom in the council chambers in the criminal justice building at sixty one Main Street, South River, New Jersey.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Seola, second by Councilwoman Valas.
Councilwoman Valas?
Yes.
Councilman Seola?
Yes.
Councilman DeSantis?
Yes.
Councilman DeZimian?
Yes.
Councilman Gertenski?
Yes.
Lesson twenty twenty four forty three?
Ordinance twenty twenty four forty eight, in ordinance of the Borough of South River, County Middlesex, State of New Jersey, amending the Borough Code of the Borough of South River, so as to amend chapter two eighty eight A entitled special events.
Mayor, I move that the council pass ordinance twenty twenty four dash forty eight on its first reading by title only, and the clerk be authorized to publish the same as required by law with a second reading in public hearing to be held at seven P M on December the ninth, twenty twenty four, by video conference via Zoom in the council chambers in the criminal justice building, South River, New Jersey.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Seola, second by Councilwoman Valas.
Councilwoman Valas?
Yes.
Councilman Seola?
Yes.
Councilman DeSantis?
Yes.
Councilman DeZimian?
Yes.
Councilman Gertenski?
Yes.
Lesson twenty twenty four forty nine?
Ordinance twenty twenty four forty nine, in ordinance of the Borough of South River, County Middlesex, State of New Jersey, amending amendments to sub area one fifty two, the lower Main Street redevelopment plan.
Mayor, move that the council pass ordinance twenty twenty four dash forty nine on its first reading by title only, and the clerk be authorized to publish the same as required by law with a second reading in public hearing to be held at seven P M on December the ninth, twenty twenty four, by video conference via Zoom in the council chambers in the criminal justice building sixty one Main Street, South River, New Jersey. Second.
Motion by Councilman Seola, second by Councilman DeZimian.
Councilwoman Valas?
Yes.
Councilman Seola?
Yes.
Councilman DeSantis?
Yes.
Councilman DeZimian?
Yes.
Councilman Gertenski?
Yes.
Bring on the reports. Bruce?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. The twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four road programs, the work on that is continuing. Contractor was milling on Leonardine Avenue today, will continue the milling tomorrow, and anticipates doing the resurfacing on Wednesday and Thursday. The contractor's also working on the north side of town, doing the handicap grants. I don't have the schedule for when they'll go over there to mill again. I'll keep surprised at that. The local transportation fund grant, we're working on that project. Twenty five hundred and five local aid program, the letters were on the DOT site today, and the borough was awarded five hundred and six thousand nine hundred and thirteen dollars for that, which was Prentice, Tice, and Cleveland. Electrical substation, the contractor's completed the testing and maintenance, and they're working on the reports, which they'll submit to us for review. And no change on the DEP stormwater assistance grant application.
Council, anything for Bruce?
Hey Bruce, one quick question. On the twenty five road program?
Yes.
We had mentioned that we were putting Mercer Street on there. That street's in really bad shape. There's more potholes
That's a street.
than are a street there. So if we need to take a look at that?
I'll go ahead and look at it. We're only allowed to put three roads in an application, so that might be why that happened, but I'll be happy to write it.
Yeah, Mercer Street's in real bad shape.
Okay. I'll give you a follow-up.
Alright, let me know.
Thank you.
Anything else, Councilor? Joe?
There are three items on the agenda. The first one is the two thousand twenty three order has been completed. You have a resolution for approval, and then you should assign the page and list the gate, then you certify the ready audit. We have unqualified opinion, which is the best opinion you can get, and no recommendations, so I wanna give all the departments a lot of credit for doing job well done. Number two is, we're redoing our Borough Dental Plan with Verizon for next year, one one twenty five to twelve thirty one twenty five with a three percent increase. And the final resolution is, we're doing our annual parking meters suspension from Thanksgiving through Christmas Day. Meters will take effect on the day after Christmas. So you see bags on the meters.
Council, anything for Joe? Page?
Yes, sir. Uh, next week, November twenty eighth and twenty ninth will be closed for Thanksgiving. There'll be no bulk pickup on Friday, and also the Thursday garbage route will be picked up on Wednesday. So put it out Tuesday night. It's in the calendar. We're gonna put a mixle out, Facebook, so that's what's happening next week. So put it out Tuesday night if it's Thursday garbage.
Anything for Page, Councilor? Fire Chief Miller?
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Council. Mayor Gindy, can I get a status of the five thousand dollar grant that was taken from, the funds were taken from the South River Fire Department budget for the portable radio grant? Is there any status on that?
I will look into it. I'll get you the information.
Okay. Second portion of this is the ten thousand dollars that was spent on a five-year plan consultation. Any status on that?
We had an opportunity to speak to the consultant. He's not a hundred percent complete with his report.
Okay.
Should have an end of the year.
Alright. Lastly, um. This may be my last meeting, depending on my work schedule, so I just wanna thank the Mayor and Council. If I am not here next month, obviously with work obligations, so I do thank you. I just implore all of you, whether you be Republican, Democrat, Independent, whatever the case may be, everybody that sits up there has an obligation to the Borough of South River. Pretty much has to be physically responsible. What I'm asking for is for five thousand dollars to be allocated back to the fire department budget. We have pagers that have to get bought. We have radio batteries that have to be purchased that are no longer in their aftermarket that we have to purchase. We've had a series of communication errors, one with me being probably three years ago in a house fire with no communication with the incident commander or operations officer. These are all serious issues that had to be put on record. Thank you. Three hundred and ninety nine calls. Oh, one other thing, status of the old engine two?
What's the question?
Status of old engine two?
Well, it's been prepared for shit. It's been prepared by, now that there's quite a few states are looking for trucks. One of them happens to be Chicago. I just happened to be on the phone with Patrick clearly, so I'll let you know how we. Uh, Council, anything for Chief? Please, Chief.
I don't have anything, Mayor.
Alyssa?
Nothing to me.
Andrew?
Uh, just one thing tonight, Mayor. Resolution three fifty two, we are gonna pull that resolution. We're still working out some of the last minute details with the redevelopment.
Now, I'm ready. Art?
Mayor, I have nothing but I asked tonight for my pure water operator for Pace to come and give us a status of the work we've been doing in the town.
Hi, everybody. Thanks a lot, Art, for the invitation. Mayor Castle, I've been, probably over a year since I've been here. So you've been operating the water system and doing all the testing for Borough of South River for about six years. So we took on a project middle of last year. I wanted to just go over the two real big projects that we've been working on that's to improve the, the water system at the treatment plant and also in the distribution system. So one of the big projects that, that's been funded was the, a major upgrade of the water treatment plant where we, we changed out some chemicals and added some chemicals. One of, one of the main chemicals we removed from the process was, was the addition of wine, and we replaced it with sodium hydroxide or caustic soda for pH adjustment. And we moved the chlorine, chlorine room, repaired the chlorine room to, to make major improvements to the to the injection of chlorine to the system. And then we also added one other water treatment chemical, which is called zinc ortho phosphate. And that, that chemical's purpose was to hopefully coat the insides of the pipe and to, and to help reduce some of the dirty water complaints out in the water distribution system. So that, that project was contracted with V N L, and it was probably a six-month project and that is just, is just about to wrap up, and, and it was pretty successful. So that, that major upgrade to the treatment not only made the treatment plant a safer place to be, but it also improved the injection of these treatment chemicals and greatly improved the water quality. So the, the, once we got the plant started up with this new treatment system, the water qualities is, is exceptional. It's, it's far exceeds any kind of E P A or N J D E P standards. We've been here for six years, the water quality is, is excellent. And, and the water quality on the treatment plant has improved immensely. So that's, that's, that's from the, the water treatment plant side. And on the distribution system side, we, we started to, we worked on it, and this is directed by the N J D E P. They asked the, the Borough of South River to do what they call a unidirectional flushing plan. And the unidirectional flushing plan is not just flushing a water system, but, but to, to flush it more effectively to help remove some of the buildup of the, you know, the iron and magnesium and tuberculosis inside the, 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 the water pipes that you have out of the system. A lot of the mains that are out in the system are four-inch mains. They were probably heavily tuberculated over the years, so. So we, what we did was we focused on what we called Zone One, which is.
From the railroad tracks to over.
Right, so where we felt the most issue, the most, the biggest complaints, the number of complaints, the issues that we were seeing in the distribution system. So we, we, they hired, the borough hired a company called Valtech. And along with us, Pace, and dewberry engineers, we designed a pretty significant unidirectional flushing plan. Where we evaluated the entire distribution system map, where we exercised every valve in that, in the distribution system. In that zone, in that particular zone that we were focusing on. And then we're right in the middle of beginning the unidirectional flushing plan. So it started about two weeks ago. The concept is to, is to close certain valves in the system and then push water and at a higher velocity in one direction to clean the pipes better. That's the purpose of unidirectional flushing, is they get a better, then get better flushing, so the insides of the pipes are cleaner. So there was about, in this particular zone, there's about a hundred and fifty segments or sequences, which is the company came in and closed certain types of valve and opened up certain hydrants. And there's about a hundred and fifty of those sequences in Zone One. And they, as of today, I was down there today, and I met with the Valtech people. They've completed about fifty-six different sequences. So they're gonna be still continuing tomorrow into next week, Monday and Tuesday. And then after the holidays, they're gonna, they're gonna complete the unidirectional flushing plan. So the hope is that we can completely clean the insides of those treatment pipes. And with the great water quality that's come from the treatment plant, that we can reduce the number of dirty water complaints that you witness in the system. So I really do, I have to really give the boroughs some credit. They put their money where their mouth was. They spent a significant amount of money improving their infrastructure, and I think it's starting to pay off really well. And I really can't, I have to thank Art Lindenski, Bruce, Adriano, and the Water Department, Mike Smith, Hector, and Simon. They were very instrumental in making this a very successful program. So they had, we have extensive training programs. I think they learned a lot. I think the Water Department's a lot better for it. And I think they're ready to start delivering excellent water quality from now until, until, you know, forever. So we're pretty happy with the results. It really wouldn't have been able to, you couldn't get this job done unless you had the finances to do it. The management behind it, and everyone working together to make it happen. So I want to thank the Mayor and Council for this very successful program. And if anyone wants to put any questions to the Mayor and Council, if they have, I'm glad to answer them.
I just got one question. So at this point?
You're a tough act to follow, but.
I won't scream at you. So at this point, you feel that everything we're doing as far as the water coming in is as good as we're gonna get it with the testing, and we're way above standards?
Yeah, the significant amount of investment at the treatment plant, you have made a significant improvement in the treatment. It's completely rebuilt treatment plant. And there's new computer systems, there's skated systems, there's controls that are top-notch, and they're more modern. That treatment plant is as effective as it can be.
So we'll call that point A, right?
Point A, yeah.
And then if there's any issues at this point, which would be point B, which would be the homes, that would be the infrastructure, the pipes that we're trying to.
That's correct.
But we already had some discussions on that. So at this point, in your expertise, we've got A as good as can be, and then we can work on B as mean.
That's correct. The next, the focus over the next couple of years is to focus on the distribution system. Replace pipes where pipes need to be replaced, and any kind of infrastructure improvements in the distribution system. I think that's, that's the focus here. But you've made all the financial, you've done everything you could do at the treatment plant to get that water quality to be as positive as possible.
Perfect.
Alright.
I want to clear the air, and I know a lot of people have been uproar, especially through social media, that they feel that today there was issues with the water due to a letter that came out back in twenty twenty three. Can you please explain steps so everybody's not running scared thinking that if they drink the water today, it is a problem? Or for that matter, back in twenty twenty three, that the issue of chlorine being off.
I can explain it. There was two notices that went out. One notice was specifically to notify the public of the unidirectional flushing program. And then there's gonna be disruptions, and they see poor water quality, and that was one notice. But the notice that you're referring to was a, was a notice of noncompliance that was received sometime in two thousand twenty-three. That was the time period when the treatment plant was off and in the process of, you know, rebuilding the plant and improving the plant. And there was, and the reason for that notice of noncompliance was there were, we experienced some low chlorine residuals in the distribution system. And that has since been resolved. And so one of the things, the very positive thing, and I'm glad you brought this up, Mayor, because the, one of the things we did before we did the flushing program is we went out and did a baseline and tested for chlorine and bacteria. And we found normal chlorine residuals, but as we instituted the direction of unidirectional flushing program, we noticed that chlorine residuals have greatly improved. So the notice is a requirement of the D E P, the, for their continuing addressing that initial notice of noncompliance. So some of the things that you're doing now will be submitted to the D E P in order to resolve that, resolve that issue. But there are no, there are no issues. This is a violation that happened like probably August, July, July two thousand twenty-three. So it's, I.
So it's basically steps that we have to take based on what D E P has.
It asks, and we can, the boroughs are fully cooperative, and we're, and then we're, and once we resolve that issue, then they can remove the notice. But there's nothing to be concerned with, with that. All the things that you've done have greatly improved the, you know, the system. System being chlorine disinfected a lot better than it was, and I'm pretty confident that that'll remain so. Hopefully that answers, answered my question.
Well, I'm an environmental company, I work for an environmental company with petroleum, so I know how it works.
Right.
If there's a spill, D E P has all these steps, and it could go on for years.
Correct.
To resolve the problem.
Exactly.
Problem doesn't exist. Five, ten years from now, it existed at the time when it actually took.
Correct. Now, I'm pretty confident we'll be resolving by the end of the year. Any other questions? Thank you, thank you very much.
At this time, I am going to open it up to the public. Is he in?
Counselor for?
Oh, I'm sorry, I can raise my hands. Councilman Seola, sorry.
Um, E D C is working hard. They're having a meeting in December with the business owners, the property owners, and some developers to get ideas on how they can move forward next year and continue with the redevelopment on Main Street. So that's coming up in December, so hopefully by the next meeting, I can have a report for you. Thank you.
Councilwoman?
Yeah.
Valas?
Yeah, just to remind you that the South River Community Thanksgiving Dinner will take place on Thursday, November twenty eighth, from twelve to two at Saint Peter in Falls, Route twelve on Jerkery Avenue. Dinner's gonna be served at twelve thirty. If you haven't R S V P, the deadline is the twentieth. That's what they request, so they know how much food needs to be done. It will be catered by the R E M R. If you still want to enter, you know, a request, you can go to forty-eight. Or you can go to the food bank they have. It looks like this. And you fill out the bottom and you put your request in, so they know how much food they need. And the only other thing is, I went again on the library website. I don't have any people on there, but the list is beyond what I can even say here. They're having so many programs for kids and adults alike. As a matter of fact, right now, there is a cooking class tonight. It could all got so funny. But between Thanksgiving and Christmas, they're gonna have multiple activities for both children and adults alike, so please, please look at the library website.
Councilman Dezenian?
Uh, the shade tree, I'll turn the purchase order, and we'll be planting ten trees later. For a bit. Congratulations to Julius Zavada. A senior at South River High School has accepted Rutgers University to play baseball. As he was number one infielder in New Jersey, three times All-State selection. And good luck to Julius as he continues his baseball career progress. Another South River athlete, I don't know. And that's all I have.
Councilman Gertenski?
Thank you, Mayor. The Offs on Aging, they publish their activities and everything at the beginning of the month and everything. Please be aware of any of the affairs that you'd like to attend and everything, and let them know ahead of time. Usually the scheduling and reservations are the first day of the month for any events that they have. There's usually limited seating, so if you plan on attending any of the events, please register early. Also, this Wednesday, the Offs on Aging is hosting the D M V for your home control. Real I D. I know there's limited parking near it. They're gonna be set up at the parking lot. But they also urge you to call the D M V to set up a reservation for, and of course, you can probably park in the B F W parking lot. Walk over to fifty-five Reed Street at the Office of Aging to apply for your real I D. There's the criteria list. You'll find that on the website for D M V, the things that you would need for your real I D. They generally have it printed out, and, you know, proof of your address and everything else. With that, that's all I have. Thank you.
Councilman Dezenian?
Yes, the next planning meeting will be Tuesday, December seventeenth at seven P M, here at sixty-one Main Street in Council Chambers. And I'd also like to add that the new basketball courts at Shine Fine Park, or more affectionately known as Leonardine Park by all us lifers. They're beautiful. They kept the eight-foot rim and the ten-foot rim. They changed orientation to the other way, so you don't have to chase the ball down the hill anymore. That would've been nice in nineteen ninety-five, but I'm a little skinny to afford it. That being said, great job, guys. That's a big upgrade. We should use it and respect it and enjoy it.
That's all, Mayor. That's it? Thank you. I'm going to open it up to the public. Give me a ten minutes. Just thinking of names here.
Hi, I'm Chrissy March. I'm here with Henry Santos. We live at Fifty Grove Street. I'm here to discuss your political show. Or and your lack of knowledge about any form of construction at all. We had the pleasure of first getting into it with her when she told us about the ordinance that we have to remove our travel trailer from our driveway. When I asked, well, why is such an ordinance in place? Why? Why can't I have my travel trailer on my property, in my driveway, behind a gate? She said, because I am here to make the township not look like a junkyard. That was terrific to me. I'm not, I'm not here to make the township look like a junkyard. I'm gonna clean it up, and I'm gonna do whatever it takes. So I said, oh, you think our town on the South River is a junkyard? She goes, well, it sure looks like it when you drive into town. That's your political show. I asked her why and what would cause me not to be able to park my camper in the asphalt driveway? Asphalt. She said water runoff. Water runoff from a camper. That's the reason, on a game trailer. So after me not moving it, asking what meeting would I go to to talk about this, or did she just, I don't know, go and figure it out? That's just so annoying. Me trying to solve the problem. And now, this isn't just me. There's a whole bunch of people at town that had campers parked in the driveway. We're hardworking people. We work hard. We love our town. We, we put our camper in the driveway. It's not an eyesore. It's not bothering any of my neighbors. We always ask, does this bother you? Are you concerned about this? When we first got the letter, we thought it was one of, didn't one of our neighbors complaining? It wasn't that. She told me she spends two hours every day in the office, writing ordinances and tickets to everyone. And the rest of her days are spent on the road, driving around, finding different things that she could take people with. And those were her words. After that, and we were waiting for her to send a ticket. This is where it gets tricky. I put up a post on Facebook, some of you might have saw, about harassment from the political. Several people were too afraid to even comment on the post. They messaged me personally. And they wouldn't come stand here before you because they were too afraid that she would attack them and start writing more summonings. Because that's the issue. If you don't do what she asked the first time, you don't jump, if you don't move. She's coming after you for all sorts of things, and illegal things. Things that don't, you could see my property on the corner a lot. She wrote that we have pergolas, that we have zeeboes, we have all these things. We went in front of the prosecutor and for my ticket for my camper. Nothing about the summons, about what's on my property. And it was for impervious block coverage. Nothing about, at this time, she didn't say the word setback. She didn't know the word setback, because she has no knowledge on construction. None. And when we got there, all she had to talk about, since I moved my camper for the argument, was my structures. And do you know why? She broke down all these extra structures that you could clearly see don't exist in my backyard? Was because she wanted me to call the town for her to come onto my property to inspect it. Said she wanted to come, and this wasn't, I'm not the only one, that she made up fake problems to come on the property. She has summoned people for all sorts of things, and they're too afraid to come up here because of the repercussions that she's going to have. That she's continually harassing the same people. I have Jennifer over here. She was one of the people that reached out. She's one of the ones that were willing to stand up here and speak for the residents that are too afraid that they're gonna get tickets that find court fees, leak, whatever. Construct, and granite. Some of this stuff goes way too far, and these people have been taking and running with their structures and everything else. But for the people that were just, I had my camper in my driveway, that was it. And I wanted to go to a meeting, and I didn't know which meeting I should go to. So I said, fine, ticket me. And I just want to make everyone aware. And I look in, look into her summonses, look into her tickets. It's not maybe one, but there's multiple infractions for the same people for things that were unfounded. And Jennifer, I don't know if you would want to come speak on your problems, but that was it. That was it for me.
Okay. I'm gonna look into this.
Yeah.
And try to resolve this problem. For what she's doing, obviously unethical, and we will talk to her.
Yeah, but I would, I would very much counsel the Mayor Council not to comment on any personal matters that have to do with any employees in another public meeting. We have not raised notice to her. She has not requested anything to be discussed in a guilty meeting. So while what we can advise is that we will look into your allegations, I don't think the Council should go any further than that. So we can sit here, we can listen, we can look into what is being said, but I would request that no one comment.
That's the one thing that she did say, that no one shows up to the meetings so she can do what she wants. That was my final memory of what she said, that no one's gonna show up to the meetings. So at least me and Jennifer get to speak for the residents.
You should never be afraid to come to a meeting, tell us.
And that's, and that's what we need to tell the residents. That's what we have to tell them, because they don't, they are afraid. Thank you.
Anyone else from the phone?
So my name is Jennifer Montes. I'm in twenty-eight Amstrun Avenue. We also had an issue with the water enforcement. We got a letter where we were on the pitch and that she needed to come inspect my basement because supposedly I have a bedroom, and somebody complained. And I had a dealer in my driveway because my son was working with his car. So when my husband went up to the Washington office, she stated that we have a dealer and that she has to come into my property to take pictures of my entire car. I told my husband, she's not coming to the house, first of all, because it's a vice of interest. We know each other from years back, and we don't have a friendship anymore, so I feel like she's attacking us. So she said, if you don't let me in, I'm gonna make sure a ticket. And I said, okay, do what you have to do. A week pass. A week pass, and she texts, and my husband said, we're waiting for the tickets, what happened? And she said, oh, we'll be coming in the mail today. So when we got the ticket, it was nothing about my basement, it was nothing about my driveway, it was about a structure that I had in the backyard. So the same day that she issued the ticket, she sent me to court. Like the same day she told us about the structure in the backyard, it's the same day she issued the ticket as far as the little court. So we went to court and it was two choice, either bring it down or the seville, I didn't know I needed to take permits to check out the seville. They should be, I did it in chief to find out what kind of permits we need to put in the seville and go to backyard. Everybody has the seville, I didn't know we needed a permit. So I told my husband to bring it down. Then we got another letter from David stating about the bedroom in the backyard. And I called the town and he came, very nice gentleman, he came with her. And I told him, she's not coming to my house, anybody's welcome to my house, but her. So he came in and he saw that there's no basement, there's a lot of sleeping in my basement. And he said that you're gonna put it into the record. But before she left, she looked like, well, if I keep getting complaints, you're letting in your property, I'm gonna keep issuing you tickets. So, I don't know. I feel like I feel harassed. My husband wants to sell the house and move because it's too much. I work in a hospital, he's disabled, like, you don't have time for this. Like, I get home really tired to be dealing with notice. And if you give me a notice, give me time. Don't give me a notice today and then tomorrow send me to court, like I don't, like I don't do anything. I don't think it's proper, so I really believe, I don't have a problem obeying the law. But I feel like she needs to follow the law the way it is, not because she has a little power to go wherever she wants.
Yeah. Twenty-eighth Avenue?
Yes, twenty-eight Amstrun Avenue.
Is there anyone else from the public?
Um, Jonathan Otto, twenty-eight Davis Street. Uh, I just wanted to talk a little bit more about this notice, from the conversation that was just before. I think notice about the, the water violation. Um, so it'll be based on the conversation that was just before, so this notice is about the net in twenty twenty-three.
That's correct.
But the dates are twenty twenty-four.
Definitely from something from twenty twenty-four.
Okay. So why are the dates of this, um, advisory starting on the August twenty twenty-four and ending in November?
That's probably when the cycle is for what, you know, you know, flush and stave and like.
Right, okay. Alright. So, okay, so the dates are all over the place, there's only four different dates on the bill thing.
It's a little bit hard to. So to chime in on that, this is what I was telling Mr. Fury before. It's almost like the DEP with petroleum still, right? DEP gives you a timeframe, and timeframe could be one month, it could be five years. And within that timeframe, you have to try to fix that problem. That's exactly what that is.
Okay. And so the only other question I have is, so this was, according to the document, it was distributed on the fourth. But the town was notified of it until the sixth. Why did it take so long for the town to get it?
That's based on the state stuff.
Well, the NICSO came out for lots.
Oh, the NICSO, I thought you saw it a month ago.
No, 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 so this, this was, this was, sure, according to the document. But we didn't get the NICSO notes for until the sixth, the sixth day.
Is that timeframe?
Well, we normally put the NICSO out the, the day, uh, or day before. And we'll try and do it a couple of days before, because we just had a repeat today, because people saw it a couple of days before. And the notice said it's a continuing thing, and people thought it was a one-day notice. It's not a one-day notice.
I mean, so here's, here's my problem, so you know, I'm right now. And why I get so upset about this thing. I had to take care of somebody who was ill and homeless. So having these notices and getting these notices as quickly to people is so important. Now, this is actually, this is just a worrying thing, I can't even, it's, it sounds like safe to me. Uh, you know, so, uh, I, 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 I believe, but, you know, to. In the past, when we've had violations, we've had violations, like in some, and they'll get notified and send. But people that are taking care of people that are sick, they, that doesn't give them any time to actually make any adjustments, adjustments or changes. Um, so that's why I'm, I'm kind of a little bit flustered, I'm a little bit upset about it. And when the dates don't make sense, that just kind of just increases the. So.
Anyone else from the public?
Always. Good evening, Mayor Gundy and the council members. Yeah, please. Uh, borough, excuse me. Um, so I want to let you know, um, I'm, I'm not gonna give you a few things about what's going on with the county. The Main Street, Main Street improvements, we're taking out the pally tracks, we paid the, the other improvements, uh, for us, the Main Street. Uh, right now, we've got, uh, we got a report back from the state, we had the consultant take care of the concerns of the state. And we're about ready to reset the state to get their final approval. Hopefully, that won't take as long as last night. But. Um, I don't know how you've been in contact, but hey.
I spoke to him once after our last meeting, he heard.
Yeah.
I, I got to a point where I got frustrated, so I just take my time with your.
Well, I was so, I wanted to find out, if I could tell you one thing and then tell you something else. I did send, I followed up email saying, oh, okay, spend a month. What's going on, this has been going on for years now, so not just a few months. Uh, please, let me know what's going on. And I, I tied, uh, Berlin. So I'll keep at it, and I'll let you know from month to month if we hear anything. But God knows. We'll find out. That's about it, county wise. So anything else that, uh, any questions that I can, uh, check out, please, or, you know.
Mayor, my many. Mr. Otto, um, I noticed a lot of the county roads, they dug up to put the handicap curvy in. There's no painted crosswalks coming across those county roads. Um, Jackson Street, they paved it last year and dug it up this year to put the handicap ramps in. When are they gonna paint the, excuse me, when are they gonna paint the, you know, the crosswalks for people?
Um.
I mean, there's some on County Avenue, there's some on Jackson Street.
I don't, I don't. That's a, you know, apartment. Um, I'll reach out and then find out.
Yeah, I didn't know who to call, I was hoping you were here tonight, so I can ask you that question.
Yeah. Yeah.
No, no, it's okay.
I'll, I'll reach out, find out, uh, what's going on.
Alright.
We'll get, we'll get an answer out. I'll do it back, you do it.
Great, thank you.
If anything else like that comes up, let me know. Not afraid to ask questions. And if the answers I might not like, I can ask the question. Um, but getting back to, uh, the water quality in South River and those notices. Um, back in, uh, July this year, a notice came out for the, uh, for cloudy water. That worth doing on the water banks, flush them out properly, which was a good thing, that was really, really good. But the more recent one that came out, quite frankly, I get confused. Because if you, if you read through them, um, there's templates that state issues and every municipality has it. That they use when they notify the public what's going on. They're templates, they're not, um, they're suggestive formats and wording. Um, I think that, you know, if somebody could go through these things and make sure that they make sense and they explain things better, because. Yeah, we talked about cloudy water in July, now we're talking about cloudy water and there's a violation. But we don't, nothing is said in here about what that violation is.
And it doesn't tell you the exact, accurate thing that's going to happen.
Yeah, and so somebody, somebody really should go through this and make sure it makes sense. Um, and then the section, which I, I fell over, but, uh, what is being done and there's nothing under there? We need to have a little bit more control of this. Who's ever doing it, I probably overreport it, since most government employees are, employees are, but still. Send these out and when the notice is, not an emergency, it's not that you have to do anything about, the very next sentence, paragraph says. But if you have health problems. Something, then, then it's, then there's something you might have to do if someone in your family has a health problem. Or it is compromising, if you do, I, I'm in pretty good health, so I don't worry too much about me. But maybe there's something in that order that was the, was the violation or situation perhaps, or something, uh. You can't get any worse than that. That maybe it does affect me, but all of a sudden, now, if you're in good health, all of a sudden I got a problem. So it's important that we get that information across to the residents, so they know exactly what's going on. And then you'll have to put out a, a statement from the police department, trying to clarify what's going on. That didn't really help too much, honestly. So I just wanted to bring that up, because my son says he's concerned about it. And like, I have early water. Uh, I've got a four-inch water main out in front of me. You gotta remember, in all reports, approximately seventy percent of all the water mains in South River have to be replaced. Particularly the four-inch lines. So, and so those get, are getting replaced. I'm not questioning anything at the treatment plant. I'm sure everything is, is really top shape. But there's a, a report that says any chemical in the water is not good. And I take that in heart. You're gonna be putting something in the water to line through line pipes and then, you know, protect them. I'm drinking that water, it wants to do to me, it's lining life pipes too, and it's preserving maintenance. So, you know, it's not a good thing, even chlorine. Now, I've lived in South River all my life, I'm gonna be seventy-four. And I remember we had probably the best water in the entire area. It was actually good to drink. Forget about soda, forget about any of these other things, the water is great. And then so is our wells. So I don't know how much chemicals were in that water, maybe, maybe that's what it was. But, uh, still, less, less kind of like, what's the better? Uh, the other thing that I, I'm wondering as I'm going along here, I work for the county, and so what we do, um. Proposals for, you know, scopes for projects and so forth, we, we have a really detailed scope. It goes to a consultant, that consultant tells us everybody that's gonna be working on a project. Or an emergency project that's gonna come up, then we might get them involved, and we know actually what's going on, so. We have a way of basing, uh, what the cost might be for that particular project. I see that municipalities apparently don't do that. They hire a thorough engineer, and anything that comes up after that is a, is an add-on. To whatever has to be done with the town. And where I'm thrilled with that, it's municipal, it's not a town. So we, we do things a little bit differently, although because we've got a full-time engineer's office. Uh, that can take care of a lot of the stuff, prepare documents to go out to consultants and so forth. So we do things very detailed, where this whole level is a little bit of context. It's gonna be a while before I'd be used to that. But, um, I would suggest that, um, anything in the, uh, the ordinance is about for any of these, any of these, uh. Positions be attached to the, uh, to the, to the, uh, request or proposal. Makes things a little bit easier, uh, instead of someone who wants, if I wanted to put one in. I'm not a licensed engineer, but if I wanted to, I would have to go and figure out, well, what the heck might have to be done? Just going to meetings, making that report, or is there other things that I've got to be concerned about? So, that would be, you know, a little bit of product, if you design it, it's clearer, it makes a lot better. Any questions, any? Thrilled. Mayor, do you have any questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks, sir. Is there be anyone else from the public?
Julie Raitam, one eighty-nine Main Street. Um, sorry, I missed the beginning of the meeting, I know you guys were gonna have the football team here, I wanted to make sure everybody had a seat for you guys. Congratulations. To the football winner for their championship. Can I speak on first reading ordinances? Can I have questions on that?
You can speak on anything.
Um, the land use board, twenty-first reading. Um, I missed it, so I don't know if you saw that on there, uh, it said effective January first, two thousand twenty-four. Was that a mistake?
Yes, that's mistaken. I think it should say twenty twenty-five. But we will, we will correct that before we publish. I appreciate that.
Um, I read your agenda, just so you guys don't have one. Um. Will you decide on members before January first, or will that happen if this goes through?
It can be decided through January first.
Will you? Again, we're gonna be abolishing the planning board and having just a land use board. Would that mean that you keep on zoning boards?
Yeah, so what, the doings are abolishing both the planning board and zoning board. They're gonna both, look at both members, both parties, and they're gonna consolidate it. They're gonna actually go through the board members, figure out who we're gonna put from each, each side, and make the land use board for them.
So I saw the land use board is similar to how the planning board is set up with the class one, class two, class three.
Class one, class two.
The zoning board isn't set up like that, so. We'll get rid of planning and zoning and just have a land use. Okay, um. The redevelopment amendment I saw that we have on the agenda. Um, what are the changes to that? So they put on the agenda, it's the master.
Specific changes for twenty-five Main Street.
Okay, oh, just that, that one?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Cause they came up like the planner and the master plan, it was an amendment. You look, the planner came up with.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes.
A lot, a lot specific.
Just specifically the, okay, just, we just had a, didn't we redo our master plan not too long ago? Wouldn't that be specific already within our master plan?
So I'm not sure if I, this is gonna answer your question, but when Todd initially came up with the Lower Main Street redevelopment plan. He specifically made each lot and block a different subarea. So when a project comes in, they could do an amendment if needed, and that's what this is. This is the amendment for each block and lot for that redevelopment plan, he did that by design. And that's actually not uncommon, that's really how they, most planners do that.
Okay. Because the way it looked, how he had his one on there, and we're mending it, and we just recently amended, you know.
Yeah.
Oh, the master, master plan, I assume, why didn't we do that when we did the master plan? Okay, what else can I add here? So Fitz's Park. We took down two building trees. And a special reason why we took them?
Yes, there is, we are expanding battery storage project, we are moving our wire underground. So we have to remove those trees to be able to do that.
I was hoping that Lisa would be here today, so that I'm not wrong on this, but the Board of Ed leaders aren't here. So the Board of Ed, I've been told that for every tree that they've been taking down for their construction, they are replacing. Will the road do the same?
Yes, most likely it will do that.
Most likely?
Yeah. So for every single tree that we take down, especially in a park, we'll.
Cause that was a very, two very massive trees.
I'm sure it was, we're expanding the battery projects, so in regards to that, we're gonna put the trees in there.
Just thinking of all the wetland areas that we have at that park, water doesn't soak up as it is there.
One of the reasons we're taking down the trees, we have to put in new underground pipes, they're gonna take care of that water problem.
Are we gonna be taking away from the park at all?
No. Absolutely not.
Uh. We removed those trees, are we using the funding from the shade tree commission to remove those trees?
No.
I'm a big tree person, guys, you guys put me on the shade tree commission for several years, and it's so important to have. I know when we do these things, we're always trying to knock down everything, but where do you guys want the water to go? And I have you guys promise you're going to plant trees.
Yeah.
That's what we're going to do. On the bills for today, we have the ten megawatt battery, and our bills for fifty-nine thousand dollars, but the back.
Our monthly, monthly. Monthly charge plus the profit that we generate from the battery stores, they get twenty-five percent, we get seventy-five percent. So it's thirty-five thousand, it's their fee for running the battery, and then the difference is the twenty-five percent for the savings. Which was any original bid that was bid years ago. Which was in the original bid, that was bid years ago.
Um, are we codification? How far along are we on that?
We are working with Dawn, we are pretty far along, we have, so the administrative portion of it is pretty much set for my office, we're now working on the second portion of it.
Is it overviewed any?
No, not yet. It hasn't gotten to council yet, it's still on the, in the works at the borough.
And then, I, I know I asked last meeting, do we have a percentage on our water meter replacements? Do you know what percentage we're at now?
No, not from the last few weeks ago. We, we were approached with seventy-five percent.
So from my understanding is, right now, if anybody needs to go get their water bill, they can email or go down to get their price?
Correct.
Okay, cause I have a family number that was reached. But I, I'm guessing meter tech saying they have to come back in because their water meter isn't reading correctly. Is that cause we're trying to put them live yet, or?
No, I mean, we're putting in five thousand meters. The chance of a certain percentage being a defective meter just happens, it's just, you're just, well, you're just one unlucky ones.
I, I was just curious. I was just curious to know if it was because you guys started to put it live and it's not going true, or are they actually still going to read the meters? Like, how are they gonna read it?
They're still reading meters, but we are getting stuff online from the meters, we're using both. Because every house is not done yet, so, and the meter reader doesn't know exactly which houses are done, which aren't. He can't carry that around, so sometimes he'll leave a blue card in a house that already has a new meter. Happens.
And then my last question is, I know we're putting in for the special events permit, we're amending the special events permit on the agenda. You guys are also adding a fee for any type of parade with a special events permit. There's no mentioning of nonprofits, is nonprofits not exempt from this fee?
No, not if they're requesting to close down, if municipal agencies are. Um, but not if they're requesting to close down streets and sidewalks.
Right, churches have parades, Corpus Christi, they have two every year. St. Stephen's, I'm sure has one as well. We're not gonna be charging the church for a.
I, I mean, they could ask for a waiver, and council could grant waivers if they wanted to, but as the ordinance is drafted.
As the ordinance is drafted, they will be paying a fee. Is that what we're dealing?
Yes.
Case by case.
That's a law. The ordinance is a law, it can't be case by case.
We could always wait if it comes down to a church. As of right now, we're going after, so this is what you're doing, you're looking into it a different way. So when you go.
I'm looking at it as a community, I'm, I'm sorry.
Well, well, hold on, here's, here's, no, hold on, hold on.
We're thinking about this, my ten minutes, hold on.
Here, here, here's, here's, actually, your ten minutes is almost up, so I'm gonna just.
But it's not up yet, right, so.
Go ahead, yeah, then in that case, you talk, I'm gonna just take.
The parade, I, I get what you're trying to say, but I don't see every day our street getting closed down for a parade. But I do see our community coming together for certain events, and having police officers coming down for a few minutes to close off the streets. Yes, I understand. And I'm just making you all aware of which guys would be doing with our community, our churches. What you do with that is a two, and if we're talking about, you're saying it's case by case, they're making it a law. That's what your ordinance is, just like the ordinance that most of you, except for Councilman DeSantis and Councilman Zinnin, uh, put that you can't have campers on your property, so it's a law. Court enforcement enforces the law, and police officers enforce the law. You guys are crazy. So we're just making aware of this law right here. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public? First call. Second call.
Close the public?
Motion by Councilman Seola, second by Councilman, Councilwoman, uh, Dallas.
Call in favor?
All right.
We're looking for manual appointments, uh, for consent resolutions, we are going to be reporting three forty. And, uh, three fifty-two will be moved to next meeting.
We're gonna read three forty separately?
Yes.
Whereas Resolution twenty twenty-four oh one authorizes the Borough Council to authorize a consent agenda to adopt various resolutions of a routine and now controversial nature at one time. And therefore be it a hereby resolved, but the below listed resolutions are hereby adopted by the Borough Council in whole, as is the same where individually acted upon. Consent Resolutions twenty twenty-four, three thirty-five to twenty twenty-four, three fifty-one. Three thirty-five, authorizing requisition of funds for payment to the custodian of school monies. Thirty-six, certify the twenty twenty-three audit. Three thirty-seven, resolution authorizing renewal of dental coverage contract. Three thirty-eight, temporary suspension of parking meters from November twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four to the, to December twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four. Three thirty-nine, resolution canceling federal and state grant receiptables and appropriation reserve balances. Three forty-one, authorizing permanent status to police officer to Jonathan Torres. Three forty-two, permit a voluntary canning fundraiser to support the South River High School Booster Club. Three forty-three, authorize vehicle auction. Three forty-four, property tax refund for twenty-four Main Street. Three thirty-five, property tax refund for thirty-six Garden Street. Three forty-six, authorizing a stipend for serving office on aging employee, and office on aging grants. Three forty-seven, authorized street utility funds. Three forty-eight, authorize the bills and claims list. Three forty-nine, authorizing CDM Smith to provide engineering services for the Water Main Replacement Project. Three fifty, appointment of crossing guards. Three fifty-one, accept October twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four regular meeting minutes.
What is your motion?
Question, can I get?
Motion by Councilwoman Dallas, second by Councilman Seola.
Councilwoman Dallas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Seola?
Yes, with the extension from three forty-eight in its entirety.
Councilman DeSantis?
Yes, with the extension from number three forty-eight, twenty-four dash zero three zero eight eight, and twenty-four dash zero three zero eight.
Councilman Zinnin?
Yes.
Councilman Gertenski? Resolution twenty twenty-four.
Flash on the table.
Three forty.
Anyone else?
Resolution twenty twenty-four, three forty, State of New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection Green Acres Program, enabling resolution. Whereas the Department, whereas the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection Green Acres Program provides loans and or grants to municipal and county governments and grants to nonprofit organizations for assistance in the acquisition and development of lands for outdoor recreation and conservation purposes. And whereas, the Borough of South River desires to promote the public interest by obtaining the Green Acres Grant of five hundred and fifty, five hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars, two hundred and fifty, from the state to, from the following projects. Number twenty, one, two, two, three, dash, twenty-four, dash, one oh four, Brackowski Park Completely Inclusive Playground. Now therefore be it resolved by the Borough of South River that the mayor of the above named body or board is hereby authorized to execute an agreement and any amendments thereto with the state known as Brackowski Park Completely Inclusive Playground.
One second.
Second.
Thank you, Alyssa. Uh, the reason I had this, uh, read separately is I wanted to let everyone know that we got, we received a grant uh, from the New Jersey GDP Green Acres Program for exactly five hundred and fifty-four thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. With that, we also received another grant for seventy-nine thousand dollars from NJ, NJ DCA Local Recreational Improvement Program. The project includes a replacement of the existing playground with completely inclusive playground. The proposed improvements include complete new safety surfaces, play structures with ramps, and a lot more. The Borough also proposes to renovate the existing rest, restrooms, facilities, and add benches, fencing, and and then gazebo to support the playground. These improvements will ensure all children have the access to playgrounds, recreational amenities, regardless of their physical abilities and their memoriosity. The renderings of the improvements are on the website. This is just many grants that have come through, and here we are, still working with these parts to actually make them what they are today. So, um, our town is getting bigger and bigger today. So, thank Dawn for that grant, and thank everyone that was involved in it. Thank you, and we'll go into governing body.
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
Oh, sorry, go ahead. Motion. By whom? Motion by Councilwoman Dallas, second by Councilman DeSantis.
Councilwoman Dallas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Seola?
Yes.
Councilman DeSantis?
Yes.
Councilman Zinnin?
Yes.
Councilman Gertenski?
Yes.
We're gonna go to governing body comments, Councilman DeSantis.
Um, so I'm gonna head up to the Pop Warner, uh, celebration, that's, that's the people. Make it a that. Councilman Gertenski? Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to thank all of our public service workers, our police, fire, especially our DPW, and wish everyone in the borough a reverent, a very happy Thanksgiving. Okay, thank you, Mayor.
And Councilman DeSantis.
Um, as Councilman, uh, Matt, you had to have that before, if you haven't seen Leonard D. Park, um, they new, uh, basketball court up there, it's very, very nice. And I hope everyone gets a chance to go up there and shoot some hoops like I used to for many, many years to make that basketball team. But it's a great improvement, and it's very nice to see that, and everybody have a happy Thanksgiving. Yeah, this is, yeah, this is.
Councilwoman Dallas?
I'd like to correct Matt and, uh, for me, I went to a couple of your games, they're very exciting, so it was good. And in reference to the parks, I understand there was something Facebook about complaining that there's no work for these kids to play, that the parks are old, that are decrepit. Well, you know what? We're putting all this money in, and enough is enough with the tagging and the knocking down of toilets and the ripping out of fences. You wanna play in these parks, keep it clean and stop destroying them. We're not putting good money into that, enough. We're not, we would never have thought to rent a park that we played in every day, enough. Whether we have to do, put cameras all over, I don't care. The money, it just galls me that these, whoever's doing it is moneying and, and worrying, what should be a great place for your kids to play? That means so many of the little dads couldn't even, and on that note, happy Thanksgiving. Councilman Seola?
Thank you. Matt, congratulations to you and the team. It's great, looks forward, as these kids get older, high school team, get back into the state championships, it'll be awesome. So congratulations, and that, happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, and I'd like to first of all, congratulate the South River Knights on a pop order of championship in Memorial, nice work. Uh, December sixth, at six-thirty, at Dale's Pond, they do Christmas tree lighting, please come out, uh, sponsor Rick, since I was a little kid as well. I also wanna congratulate, uh, Riomar for becoming the forty-first New Jersey Best Spanish and Portuguese Restaurant in the state. It's a way here and going home tale. Now to chime in on some of the questions that were asked previously in regards of, well, why redevelopment? Redevelopment is gonna happen regardless how you wanna look at it, I know that's not gonna be easy to, uh, consume, because we're not used to the change in this town, which the town is desperate to be of redevelopment. We just passed the third first meeting for a redevelopment this year. So that's great work on the administration as well as the community and the family. Now as a for the land use board, land use board, I know I've, I've spoken about this quite a few times, it did one of these ref land. A land use board is a consolidation of the planning board and the zoning board, which means I am cutting back on no more months at a time, coming back and forth to the meetings, once at a time, paying ass trophies, once at a time, and waiting for that answer whether it's gonna be a yes or no. Now you come to one meeting, you have your public here and you're completing this right on the spot. We're trying to streamline, we're trying to make it easier for a homeowner, a developer, a contractor, anyone that wants to do any kind of improvement to your house, building your business. This is exactly what we are trying to do. We're trying to move this town forward. And we're always gonna have these little hiccups, these little speed bumps that come with it. Also, when it comes down to the speeding on the streets, you know, there was a gentleman that spoke about the stop signs, that we were using them as the turners. You know what sucks is that when you get kids that get killed on the streets, I really don't care what the, what the address is. I'm sorry to be, I'm gonna be upfront, I will speak, I'll speak to our attorney about this, and I'm sure we're gonna be talking about it tomorrow. But we are doing our best to keep our streets safe. In regards of the parks, um, we continue to develop our parks. You're saying that Dale's Pond, Brackowski Park, the grant. Um, in regards of our policing, in regards of the, what was said earlier today in regards of the, the special events. So let me explain this to you when it comes down to the police department. The police department, we pay the taxes on one of the enemies. And we have to call the police department for a special event, when we have to call them, and they, we're asking for two police officers to come in and do traffic safety. Even though they're sitting there for a few minutes, and if they are not on patrol, and they're called in to come in for a special event program, so that. What you don't realize is although they're coming in for a few minutes, they get paid for four hours. So that means I'm paying two cops at eight hours for a few minutes to do traffic safety. And we, the taxpayers, are being punched in the face with it. I'm not saying that we can't bend over backwards when it comes down to it, which we do, the police department does a lot for this town, they do. But it's not easy to pull a police officer from their home on a day that they're off to do a special events. So I'm trying to play it fair. On a lighter note, back in February, this is a surprise to everybody. Back in February, we all know that we lost our internet due to a, uh, unexplainable accident that happened town's away. Unfortunately, we were affected with internet loss, uh, South River, Washington, Woodbridge, I just said, everybody was affected. Since then, there was a big, big pet peeve of mine, so I had the opportunity to speak to Comcast and Infinity, and they were not exactly, uh, I guess you could say receptive to my anger. So I decided I'm gonna go a little bit farther, I'm gonna speak to other companies, so I had numerous meetings with Verizon. And literally a week and a half ago, they called me and they congratulated me that I'm now on a list for Verizon, Verizon files next year. So South River is officially on that list for Verizon files. I wanna congratulate Matt and Nick on a remarkable, uh, election, you did such a great job. I also wanna congratulate Julie and Margaret, I know it's not easy, think about, we have boards, so let me know. Other than that, have a happy and healthy Thanksgiving, and be a gentleman's over, so I will.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Dallas, that's gonna vice count.
Senator eight five one.
On paper?